...to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes, thank you. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with two closed-session items. Item number one, conference with labor negotiators, and item number two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation workers' compensation. Now, before we convene to close session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on item one or item two?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've received requests to speak on item number one. I have not received any requests to speak on item number two. So, for item number one, I have received a total of three requests to speak. So, for our rules and procedures, we'll set the timer at three minutes per speaker.
Yes, please.
And we'll call up the first, the three speakers, Eric Morkbay, and Mark Cooper, and Jesse Dolan, so...
Welcome.
Go ahead.
City Council, fellow coworkers, fellow city employees. Questions that I've gotten: What incentive do you have? Why are you here? Why would you do this? I attended a training in another agency on the peninsula a few months ago, and during instructions was introduced as the peninsula is a training academy, city of San Mateo. We've been so hyper-focused on increasing quantities of management at the detriment of the true professional workers that you've been losing talent faster than you can hire. Institutional knowledge is much like trust. It's earned or learned in drips, and it's lost in buckets. There's no incentive to stay and earn time or trust in a city that doesn't show that, show you that they value that time and trust. No incentive to learn and better themselves on behalf of the infrastructure. Yes, infrastructure. I work for the infrastructure of San Mateo on behalf of the residents. And we're shown monthly and yearly how little anyone really cares to bring us along, bring us along on a career, a path of improving ourselves for your betterment. You need to immediately incentivize longevity. Make staying a positive outcome. Reward, reward, reward additional education. Show them that you value them. My greatest personal battle has been positivity. This organization is a grind. It's a constant battle fighting off consistent negativity at so many levels. I was asked recently, why? Why do you choose to do this role? You've been, you've seen the inadequacies in the contract, and you still choose to do it. I fight. I have fought, and I still fight. Not for outlandish rewards, only for fair. Fair. Problem with that is that we can't even come to an understanding of what fair is. Coming up on 25 years, and we still can't agree on something as simple as fair. I still fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mark Cooper, and our final speaker will be Jesse Dolan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Cooper, senior park lead and chapter chair for the SEIU, this unit. So, good evening, council members, and Mayor Diaz Nash. As you know, the maintenance unit is currently in the bargaining table with the city of San Mateo. This is an essential, this is especially important negotiation because it is the first negotiation post-COVID. I feel is it important, it's important to point out that when COVID was labeled a global pandemic, and most of the population was at home, we were deemed essential workers, and we continued to come in. While many employees, other employees in the city of San Mateo were able to go home, be at home, telecommute, we were unable to do that. It was an extremely difficult time. At that time, we didn't understand COVID, you know? We put our lives on the line. I feel, no, we kept, we kept your toilets running, and we kept your roads drivable. And let's not forget that for some time, the city parks were the only refuge. So, there was quite a bit of time there where the only place that the public were allowed to go was a public park. And that was a lot of work, sanitizing playgrounds daily, cleaning restrooms every few hours with a sanitizing, sanitizing gun. When the city asked us to take a zero raise, we complied during COVID. We, we haven't been made whole. Now, I ask you, are we still important? Are we still essential, or only when you need us? Because that's what it seems like. It seems like we're important when you guys need something, and when things are running fine, we're forgotten. This unit now asks you to help us. This is the city's opportunity to show the maintenance unit it cares for their workers. So, I'm asking for a fair contract for the maintenance unit. We're not asking for crazy numbers. We, we really need a fair contract, and you guys have the power to step up and do something about that. And, and we expect that from city council. I've never seen our unit more together in solidarity than I've, than I've seen now. So, I just want you to know that the maintenance unit are strong, and we are talking. We expect some results. So, please consider when you guys have a closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jesse Dolan, and the final speaker will be Rick Bonilla.
My name is Jesse Dolan, and I'm the maintenance planner at the wastewater treatment plant. I am here to tell you a little about my experience at the plant. I was hired three years ago, and when I first arrived, there was a definite toxic atmosphere at the plant. Turnover was high, pay was low, and the culture was one of apathy. We had been through seven managers in as many years, and in only a few months, I saw the mechanics department lose three of his five employees. When Rob Leermoff became the plant manager, the culture began to change. People began to believe that the plant could improve. Apathy began to be replaced with hope. However, pay remains a constant issue, and while much has improved, we still lose our best people to better-paying jobs. Market conditions are such that people are quitting and taking jobs that pay on average 20% more than what we offer. In only three years, we have lost 13 staff members, which is nearly half of our workforce. Currently, we only have four out of eight mechanic positions filled, and none of the instrumentation technicians. The city is not responding to market conditions. Hence, we cannot retain people. We do not believe we are being compensated fairly for the work we do. The city of San Mateo sets the low-income threshold for its BMR program at $147,000. That means, by the city's own standard, not a single member of the maintenance unit can be considered middle-class. When I say that we struggle, it is not hyperbole. It is an undeniable truth. We are asking to have the same opportunities that previous generations have enjoyed. We are asking that we be, are compensated enough to live with dignity. We are, we are asking that our families and our children not have to live in fear of financial catastrophe. We are not asking to become rich. We only ask that you stop insisting we remain poor. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rick Bonilla, the former mayor here of the city of San Mateo. I think it's no secret to any of you that I stand with the working people. It was hard for me to learn of this situation and hear the plight of these workers. I demand bargaining in good faith. I demand respect. These people do the hard work of the city of San Mateo. It's hard to find people to do this work. They deserve to be able to live decently here in our very high cost of living city on this peninsula. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right, then, I will close public comment at that time, and we will convene in closed session in conference room C.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Welcome, everyone. We are back from closed session. And we are going to receive a presentation on the status of efforts to minimize train horn noise impacts and provide feedback. And Tina Pham and Karen Magalanas are going to give us the presentation.
All right. I'm role mayor and council members. My name is Tina Pham here with Karen, and we are engineers in Public Works. Also on Zoom, we have Mike Cato, a representative from our traffic division and Bellician Associates, who is our designer for Villa Terrace and East Bellevue here to support us as well. So this presentation will provide an update on the city's efforts to reduce impact of train horn noise in San Mateo, which has long been identified as a city council priority. Since we have limited time this evening, I'll move through the slides fairly quickly, but there will be opportunity at the end to revisit them if desired. So staff here is seeking feedback on our progress today so far regarding train quiet zone and proposed next steps. We have three questions. First question is, does council have any concern with the proposed closure at Villa Terrace? Does council have any concern with the proposed median improvements on East Bellevue Ave? With primary design impacts being removal of five parking spaces and restricting access to and from homes within the median area to only right turns. Last question is, does council support continued pursuit of the quiet zone as proposed by staff? We'll have opportunity at the end to revisit these questions. So this is my brief agenda. Of course, we're going to focus on staff's progress since the last city council meeting, June of 2023. I'll then provide a refresher for scenarios of quiet zone qualifications. Then I'll talk about recent public outreach and education, preliminary design considerations, and railroad stakeholder coordination so far and to come. And last, we'll end with recommended next steps. So timeline of staff efforts. I won't have time to read through all the items here, but I want to focus on some of the main ones. First one I wanted to talk about was in 2017, this was the year that train horn noise became a council priority. And since then, staff at all different levels, including council members, have worked toward progressing this initiative. Staff have also been working very closely with Cow Train. A good example is in 2020, staff worked with Cow Train on initiating a project at Fourth and Fifth Avenue, which included installation of quad gates. We are happy to report that earlier this year, April of 2024, city staff have actually finished our construction of this portion of the project. And we are still working with Cow Train as they are expected to complete their construction of four quad gates at these two crossings early in 2025. With regards to Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave, there was a traffic study in 2022 initiated then, which brought forth alternatives recommended to council in June of 2023. I have a slide specifically on the traffic zone that I'll get to next. Next, in 2024, staff worked on a public outreach initiative to get the word out regarding Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. And we also initiated the design with Bellician Associates as well this year. Lastly, I want to mention that our city manager staff and certain council members were able to discuss this initiative with FRA, which is the Federal Railroad Administration in DC, early this spring as well. So 2022 traffic study. We completed a traffic study in 2022, 2023 with the following objectives, four following objectives. The first objective was to identify different rail safety measures that could be implemented at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. Second objective is to study potential impacts of rail safety measures on traffic circulation, transit, walking, bicycling, and emergency services. Third objective was to consider engineering feasibility and cost. And last objective was ultimately to recommend an alternative to be implemented as part of the city's train quiet zone efforts. Next, I want to talk about the study area for the 2022 traffic study. The study examined congestion levels at various intersections in a wide area because closing crossings has a potential to change traffic patterns neighborhood wide. The study area was bounded by 101 Freeway, Popular Ave, El Camino Real, and Peninsula. So intersection selection was primarily completed to identify intersections most likely to fall below the city's acceptable level for congestion. This meant the study focused on intersections with high-volume streets such as arterial or collector-type roadways in this area. The study looked at 11 study intersections shown in blue here, in addition to studying traffic impacts at the crossing themselves and nearby crossings, which are shown in red and orange circles. Ultimately, the traffic study concluded that for the selected alternative, which is shown here with a red box consisting of closure at Villa Terrace and median addition at East Bellevue Ave, there were minimal changes to the congestion levels at all studied intersections, and this met or exceeded San Mateo standards, also met and exceeded requirements in the San Mateo Minusso Code. So this next slide, I'd like to present updated scenarios for quiet zone qualification. Council has seen this table before, and there's a lot to this table, so bear with me while I go through some of the details in the columns and with, in terms of the rows. So the first column here is different scenarios for quiet zone qualification. Second column is very important. It's called the risk index. So what is the risk index? Risk index is a calculated value that the FRA uses to determine if cities have implemented enough safety measures to lower the risk of collisions enough to qualify for a quiet zone. Basically, less than 100% qualifies us for a quiet zone, but we're obviously shooting for the lower the better, ideally around 90%. The next three columns here provide more context for these scenarios, including estimated costs, anticipated quiet zone enactment date, and whether the study was included in the 2022 traffic study. So next, I'll go through the rows. First row here is current conditions, assuming Fourth and Fifth Railroad grade crossing projects are complete. So you see here, we have a risk index of 138% of the threshold. Remember, we're shooting for 90% or less. So this scenario here, scenario, the current scenario is not enough for us to qualify for a quiet zone. We have to do more in order to meet the FRA threshold requirements. Next scenario here is scenario A. This is a very popular scenario. This scenario, we install quad gates at all eight of our at-grade crossings. This would cost the city $21 million and likely take us about four to five years at the minimum to implement. But the risk index is very good. 35% would easily get us under the threshold. So next, I want to highlight a few scenarios, scenarios B, C, E, and F. All of these scenarios have risk indexes between 110% to 114%, so pretty similar. And all of them have either quad gates or closures at either Villa Terrace or East Bellevue. So this tells me that these scenarios would not have us meet the threshold, and we would need to do something more. We have to at least do something at both Villa Terrace and East Bellevue to be able to meet the quiet zone qualification requirements. That leaves us only with three scenarios. Scenario D, which is install quad gates at both Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. Scenario G, which is closure at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. And scenario H, which is add closure at Villa Terrace and medians at East Bellevue Ave. So of these three scenarios, scenario D includes quad gates at both, has a risk index of 89%, but would cost the city $7 million and have us implement over the next several years, hopefully implementing quiet zone in 2029. If we'd like to have something faster in terms of implementation, that leaves us with scenarios G and H. And these scenarios are very similar, the only difference being what is going to happen at East Bellevue Ave. Scenario G has closure, and scenario H has medians being proposed. Both of these would result in a risk index between 79 and 80%, which is good, relatively low estimated cost, and relatively fast implementation of a quiet zone in 2025. Ultimately, and this was based on discussions during last council meeting in June of 2023, staff recommended alternative or scenario H because it was thought that medians would be less impactful than closure. And council agreed with staff as this is the most cost-effective and quickest implementation, and asked that staff consider moving forward with this in addition to achieving public outreach goals. So the next slide here, I have our three main public outreach goals that staff had in mind as we completed outreach in 2024. So the first goal is really to educate the community on the big picture regarding train quiet zones and focus on the benefits to the community. The second goal we have is related to informing specific residents and businesses of upcoming changes at the at-grade crossings at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. The third goal of outreach is to maintain continual communication with interested parties in order to give them updates throughout the design, and especially important throughout the construction in order to minimize impacts. So what did we actually do in terms of outreach in 2024? We did a number of things. One of the things I want to mention is that we did bilingual outreach materials to this neighborhood. So that included sending out poster, postcards, and mailed letters to over 3,000 households. We set up A-frames, which were basically posters at Villa Terrace and at East Bellevue. We had social media posts, website updates, individual meetings with stakeholders. We even did door knocking at over 300 homes on Villa Terrace, East Bellevue, and Woodside Way. And we had an online survey, which we were lucky to have roughly 200 responses from community members. In general, the survey showed strong support for the project as shown. This fourth column shows specific key findings from the survey itself. So 90% of the survey respondents were aware of alternative routes in the event Villa Terrace would be closed. 66% showed support for Villa Terrace closure, and 59% showed support for East Bellevue median installation. But there were some concerns that were raised, and we want to be clear to council what some of these concerns are. So there were some residents who were concerned about traffic congestion. If Villa Terrace is closed, there would be traffic rerouted to other streets nearby, and so some residents on the streets express concern. The next three concerns here are mostly related to East Bellevue. As I mentioned previously, driveway access due to the proposed medians is a concern, especially for those five residents who will no longer be able to make left turns in and out of their driveways. Also, we heard from multiple folks that median visibility was a concern. There are existing medians on East Bellevue where there are smaller medians. where there are smaller medians, residents haven't, residents and drivers have issues seeing them, and this has resulted in accidents in the past. So for the design moving forward, the staff wanted to really look at median visibility and what can be done here. Lastly, we have concerns related to parking removal. On East Bellevue, there'll be five parking spots proposed to be removed in order to accommodate emergency vehicles. So next, I want to go into slides related to the preliminary design. And the design was completed, the preliminary design was completed by Bellices and Associates, as I mentioned previously. So currently, we're at the beginning of the design process, so there's a lot of time to tweak things before the design is finalized. And we welcome community input and engagement. And so this slide shows the proposed design of Villa Terrace in the above view. The existing condition is a through street, and the design here includes two cul-de-sacs on each side of the tracks. Vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists will no longer be able to cross at this location. Behind the curb that will be part of the cul-de-sac, there'll be granite and rock materials and a Caltrain standard fence on both sides. Also, the existing small median, as shown in this figure, will be removed as part of this project. So this next slide I have for Villa Terrace is a view if you're standing in the street itself. So you can see right off the bat, there's a fence, and that fence will be available for utility maintenance companies and Caltrain access only. Unfortunately, no public access. In addition, there'll be several driveways that need to be reconstructed in order to support the design. We'll work closely with those affected properties as we continue outreach. Also, no parking will be allowed in the cul-de-sac itself, and that's to accommodate emergency vehicles. However, since the existing medians will be removed, there'll be one or two spots adjacent to the cul-de-sac, outside of the cul-de-sac, that can be converted from red curb to parking. So now we have a view of East Bellevue from above. As you can see, the existing medians will be removed and replaced with 200-foot-long medians that are 2 feet wide and 6 inches tall. These medians will restrict left turns in and out of certain properties, five properties on the street. In addition, parking will be removed in front of the medians due to emergency vehicle access. This decision was made in consultation with San Mateo Consolidated Fire and meets code requirements. The calculated five parking stalls to be removed here is based on an assumed standard length of 22 feet. However, however, based on current conditions and varying vehicle sizes in practice and on this street, it could appear that more stalls are removed, potentially six stalls, six parking stalls. So we understand that parking loss is a major concern for this community. So we've reached out to residents who are affected and are working with other city departments on parking options. I have a slide later to mention some of these parking options. So this is my last slide for renderings. This is a view of Bellevue as if you were standing in the street. And as I mentioned before, median visibility was a huge concern for us. So you can see the design here includes multiple reflectors, yellow striping, in an effort to maximize the visibility of these new medians to be proposed. So next is parking supply options. Staff conducted an evaluation of the existing parking supply in the area bounded by East Popular Ave, North San Mateo Drive, Grand Boulevard, and North Clermont Street. We assessed the right-of-way in this area and calculated an estimated 306 parking spots in this area, again, assuming a 22-foot parallel parking stall as the standard. So the loss of five parking spots on Bellevue represents roughly 2% of the parking spaces in this location. And this loss impacts the residents in front of the medians most severely. Staff investigated ongoing, near-term, and long-term options to potentially address concerns, and those are listed here on the slides. The last three bullets will require additional work in the future months and years by staff from multiple departments, including CDD, Public Works, Transportation Staff. Some of these may require code changes in order to implement, to provide relief for these residents here. So this next slide includes administrative steps to establish a quiet zone. These are dictated by the FRA. And I'm lucky to say that we have already completed step one, which is a field meeting with the FRA, California Public Utilities Commission, and Caltrain. We completed this first step in May of 2024. Steps two, three, and four include issuing a notice of intent, having FRA conduct inspections of the crossings, also issuing a notice of quiet zone establishment. We aren't able to do steps two to three until we get closer to design completion and construction starting. But once we get there, we hope to complete all of these steps by the end of 2025. Also, I want to mention ongoing maintenance requirements. The FRA has told us that maintenance is an area that cities need to prioritize even once a quiet zone is established. And we are fully committed to focus on the signage, striping, medians, tree trimming, anything that's needed to maintain the quiet zone once it's enacted. So this is my slide on next steps as it relates to public outreach. I want to reiterate that we are not done with public outreach, and we'll continue to send updates to interested parties. We'll continue to hold stakeholder meetings, and we'll continue to work on drafting and sending out construction notifications when you get to that point. One thing I also want to mention is that we want to be proactive during construction management. So that is important to us to minimize any sort of impacts to individual stakeholders as the construction is happening. This is my last slide here, and it's a summary slide to show staff's next steps. In the next year, we'll continue outreach and design for the recommended alternative on Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave. And once Caltrain finishes construction at Fourth and Fifth Ave and the city completes our construction at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue Ave, we can issue a notice of quiet zone establishment. And again, we aim to complete all of these administrative steps with the FRA by the end of 2025. And even after 2025, we'll continue to monitor our risk index to make sure the train quiet zone is maintained. All right, this is my last slide here, and I welcome council's direction and feedback on what is presented.
Thank you very much. That was a solid presentation. And having been one of the council members who went to DC, everything you said there was absolutely accurate in terms of what the federal government is requiring of us. So at this point, why don't we open it up for public comment? City Clerk.
Madam Mayor, so if you wish to speak on this item and you have not done so already, please provide me with a request to speak slip. If you're participating via our virtual environment, please raise your hand. We'll just give you a few moments to do so. And when I call your name, for those attending in council chambers, to make sure we can receive all of your public comment, if you could please, when I call your name, please line up to my right. That would be greatly appreciated. So Madam Mayor, I have a total of 11 requests to speak, which per council adopted rules and procedures that would have a recommended time per speaker of two minutes.
Okay.
Okay. So we will start with the first three speakers. Our first speaker will be Angus Chandler, followed by Kevin Simpson and Rick Bonilla.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
So thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for your time on this issue. Thank you for your time as well. I have three comments to make. The first is I would strongly recommend a four quadrant gate at the Bellevue Crossing. I believe this is a safer option. It is a, it is a safer option. It is best for parking on the street, and it does not require many of my neighbors to be restricted when they leave their parking spots. I would, my second point is I would like to ask why you have not considered completely closing the crossing at Bellevue Avenue. This is the first time I've ever seen that chart, and I was surprised. And it's interesting to see that chart and see that is actually safer than the current option that is being adopted. On Bellevue Avenue, there is a lot of traffic, a lot of very fast traffic. I know you're currently doing a traffic study on this street. But many of my neighbors can talk about accidents that have happened to their vehicles on this street. And it is, it seems like that would be both the safest from a train point of view and from a traffic point of view. And then my third comment, which I don't think I've seen addressed anywhere, is regarding the noise that is caused by the ringing of the bell. The train noise is in, when the, when the gates come down, there is the noise that alerts people that are in the area that the gates are coming down. At least for myself, this noise is just as loud as the train. It is piercing, and sometimes it can go on for several minutes depending on how fast the train is going. I've not seen that addressed at any point in any of the documents or here today. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kevin Simpson, followed by Rick Bonilla and Peter Martin.
Thank you, council. My first comment on this, and I'm in favor of proceeding as fast as possible with this project. I regret, however, that we talk about it as a quiet zone, as that's, as if that's the only goal. We should be talking about this as a safety zone. We are soon going to have much faster accelerating and much quieter trains going through our neighborhoods. This is one of the densest areas where Caltrain comes in contact with both neighborhoods and very busy and active downtown. The quiet zone is a benefit of safety improvements, and we should keep our focus on that. These at-grade crossings are become, are becoming more and more problematic. We're losing a lot of people in accidents every year. And we should maintain our focus on this as a safety consideration, which has the added benefit of some blessed relief from train noise, horns, from train horn noise. I live over on South Humboldt, and I can hear the train noises all hours of the night and day. I'm looking forward to the electric trains. I'm looking forward to quieter trains. But I'm also really, really enthusiastic about improving safety through the core of our city, which is a very, very busy place. We can't do too much about modified exhausts that plague our neighborhoods or seven-and-a-half-hour commercial fireworks displays in our corners. But this is something we can do. So the quiet, the quiet benefits will be great. Finally, I'd like to say that this has been a long road. Since 2017 till now, it seems about like the normal process for something significant to get done in our city, maybe a little fast. Let's finish the job. I know there's some differences about how to do it, but let's just get the darn thing done and make a safer, quieter, more pleasant downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this item will be Morgan P. For in our virtual environment. Our next speakers will be Rick Bonilla, Peter Martin, and Lily Zhao.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, and thank you all city council members. First, I want to say that I support quiet zones. And I support them because they bring safety. Okay, I think that it's important that the trains have been making the noise they're making because safety needs to be of paramount importance. People become aware that a large, heavy, fast-moving piece of equipment is coming for us when they hear a horn. Okay, but there are other ways to deal with this. And we've just seen some alternatives being offered tonight. I only actually regret that the choice seems to be moving away from what I think, and I agree with other speakers, that the safest would be the quad gate system. So I want to say, safety needs to be the, I got some writing that I sent to you emails earlier. "Safety needs to be the utmost consideration when planning for a quiet zone at Bellevue Avenue. By far, the safest street option for Bellevue Avenue would be a quad gate system. The 100-foot dividers will not be effective, and they will make it hard for homeowners to access their properties. Some people with poor judgment will continue to think they can drive around the gates and possibly get hit by a train." Local homeowners tell me that in the outreach process, they were not offered an option for a quad gate system. I just saw the presentation, so maybe who I spoke with wasn't paying attention. But I don't know. It's possible that homeowners think anything sometimes, but people absorb information differently. Local homeowners, I think that that would explain, okay, let me skip that part. "Money is important, but the safety of San Mateo residents is more important. I implore the council to dig deeper and find a way to make the residents of San Mateo more safe at the grade separation without impairing access to their property." So the quad gate would mean you wouldn't need the 100-foot-long medians. You wouldn't lose any parking. Homeowners would maintain access to their properties, and it would be safer. I really urge you to find a way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Peter Martin, followed by Lily Zhao and Kevin Zhao.
Good evening, Mayor and Clerk, Council members. Thanks for giving us your time. I live at 351 Bellevue, it's three houses to the west of the train tracks. I've been there 32 years with my wife and now grown kids are, are out of the nest. The numbers of five parking spots being taken away is highly inaccurate. It's going to be five parking spots on my side of the street, sorry, on the west side of the tracks, not the east side. Take the hundred-foot median and go west and go east. Other than the width of the tracks, you've got 200 linear feet. I went out there with a tape measure and measured twice. We are losing 50% of our parking spots. Fifteen to sixteen out of 32 to 33. Not just this extension, but the previous one 15 years ago took away a bunch of spots. So all told, this median or these medians will cost us 50% of our parking. Now imagine the median on each side and it's during the daytime and along comes one of many possible delivery trucks, Uber pickups, trash pickup, whatever it is. I timed one the other day for four and a half minutes and now you have a temptation for a driver who doesn't want to wait on either side anymore for that to clear. They're going around and because of those medians, you've now increased the danger, not decreased the danger. And imagine during the school day, I've been there 32 years, you've got hundreds of cars going to San Mateo High School and maybe that many going to park school in both directions. You've got kids on scooters, you've got bicyclists, you've got pedestrians, and you've got a potential big hazard. That was one minute, I hope.
Yeah, that's two minutes.
That was two minutes?
Yes. Thank you.
Can I extend for 30 seconds?
I'm sorry, we were not able to extend. Our next speaker will be Lily Zhao, followed by Kevin Zhao and Lorraine Waters.
Good evening, Council members. I'm not here to argue whether or not the City Council should support a noise reduction. I think we can all agree that reducing noise would be a pleasant thing for all of us. I'm here to discuss how this project gets done and how it's completed is of utmost importance. Misrepresentation is an issue here. Like Peter Martin said, that there are several parking spaces that would be eliminated in this already busy thoroughfare. I live at 355 East Bellevue and I had asked Tina Faman, her team, to take a look at the nighttime study and I don't think that was necessarily done. About a year ago, a car came and hit the median and plowed through three of our vehicles, totaling all three vehicles plus another neighbor's vehicle. And that incident happens on a regular basis. Kids come down, drivers come down the Bellevue all the time. They hit the curb, they overcorrect, and they ricochet and hit our cars. Last year, not just the totaled vehicles, but mirrors get knocked down all the time. So what I'm trying to explain to you is that this is a tight, small street creating, extending this median. I don't care how many reflectors you put up there, they're going to get knocked down within a week and it just creates more hazard. You've already heard the amount of parking spaces that this takes away from us. I'm imploring this council member team to look at four quadrant gates or closure of Bellevue as a safe option, but not to take away, not to extend this median. That only poses additional harm and just traffic unsafety in this area. So I'm imploring you guys to do that. The idea that we would, the, the team has looked at other parking options, I've, we have not heard of any of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kevin Zhao, followed by Lorraine Waters and Chris Manera.
My name is Kevin and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did send you all an email with a letter in it. I hope you had time to review that. But to summarize what's in that letter, basically, you know, I am an engineer by profession and my wife is an architect by profession, so these comments come from that point of view. And also, more importantly, my comments come as a resident of Bellevue Avenue. You know, I've lived there for 29 years. My house was built in 1924. It's 100 years old this year. And as long as that house has been there, there's been a train, the train crossing there. And noise and all has been there. Now, the, the train noise, it doesn't prevent anybody from doing anything. It doesn't stop anybody from doing anything, right? I've had Easter egg hunts, bridal showers, engagement parties, backyard barbecues at my house, and the train noise hasn't stopped me from doing any of that. But if you put in these medians, it's going to take away the rights of these residents for doing things. We've mentioned parking and it is 10 spots. In the letter, you can see the pictures of the 10 spots that are gone. And we talk about access to driveway. It's not just one way. My neighbor has a truck with a 24-foot turning radius, but with the median in front of his house, there's only 17 feet to turn. He is not going to be able to get into his driveway either way, left or right. So what I'm asking you guys to do is, you know, don't accept this. I know that, you know, the median is a lesser cost, but why is that okay? Why is that okay to put that burden on us as residents? I would ask you and request that you go back to the PUC, to the federal train persons, and request more money.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Lorraine Waters, followed by Chris Manera and Jennifer Martin.
So my name is Lorraine Waters. I've, I live at 350 East Bellevue Avenue. I've lived in my home for 32 years. I can say ditto. My message would be the same as many of the people who came before me. Safety is a real issue. I think there's going to be many more problems if the median and those extra reflectors are put there. More doesn't mean better. I don't think that eight reflectors or 10 reflectors are any better than just one good reflector that works. The reflectors that have been in there in the past have actually been hit by cars and, you know, just taken out of whatever function they were intended to be. All the people who have spoken before me, I agree with all their concerns, especially the safety concern. And I think either we need to close that site or have the, the four gated, but I am definitely not in favor of the medians. I think, I've, well, I lost.
You're okay.
I just, I just think what I've seen, I don't know if this is working.
You're okay.
Huh?
You're okay.
I just think that what I've seen in the city, I was, I'm very disheartened to see the use of these six-inch medians. I ran, my car ran into one on a rainy night, just as they were finishing. This is downtown on one of the medians and I had to go and have my mechanic readjust my.
Thank you.
My alignment and stuff, $200 because of a stupid median.
Thank you.
So you can tell I'm very opinionated about this, but I will leave the podium now and yes, I think I've made how I feel clear.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Chris Manera, apologies if I'm mispronouncing your name, please correct me if I have that wrong, and Jennifer Martin, followed by Dara Savage.
I'm the neighbor with the 19-foot truck and the medians would be right in front of our house. Did you hear me? What I said already? Okay. And I run a business out of my house for 35 years. My wife and I have resided on Bellevue and I need the street to load and unload equipment for my businesses. I have limited mobility, I have a handicap placard, and our driveway is on a slope. So that makes it difficult for me. And like I said, I have 19-foot trucks. I don't know where I would park those in the neighborhood. There's nowhere to go. If you've ever been to Bellevue and Claremont in the neighborhood, you would know that. It's, it's many apartments and multiple dwellings. So even before we moved there, there was a, there was a parking problem. So to us, our parking is priceless and irreplaceable and the median would be unsightly and oppressive and would devalue our property. No one wants a red zone in front of their house. Where would we have deliveries and family and visitors park? The median would force us to go in a city-mandated direction, taking us out of our way just to get home. When school is in, at San Mateo High School, getting out of our driveway is almost impossible because of the many trains and the line of cars which can back all the way up to San Mateo Drive. And then when the gates malfunction, that makes it even worse because it's train after train and so that prohibits us from getting out of our driveway. And so I believe this proposal creates more problems than it solves and I would be definitely in favor of the quad gates. That would be.
Thank you.
Or a closure, anything but red zones, that would be part of hardship for us.
Thank you.
My wife is also disabled.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jennifer Martin and our final speaker in chamber will be Dara Savage.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Jennifer Martin and I just want to let you know that I've lived in San Mateo for 52 years, moved here when I was 10. I've been a teacher in the San Mateo Foster City School District. I'm a CASA in San Mateo, court-appointed special advocate for foster kids. I'm on the board of a local preschool in San Mateo for low-income kids. And I'm telling you all this because I want you to understand that I'm deeply invested in San Mateo. I have a 50-plus-year history here and I've been a tax-paying homeowner for 32 years. Peter Martin is my husband. He's been a teacher in Hillsborough for 35 years, now retired. I've served in this community. I love my community. I grew up in San Mateo Park. I live down by the railroad tracks. I love my neighborhood. I don't wish that I lived in a bigger, fancier neighborhood. I love where I live. It's multicultural, it's diverse, and we raised our kids there and I'm glad that they, that we raised them there. We have people of all backgrounds in our neighborhood and we're thankful for that. I feel like to lose multiple parking spaces, to have a median put in with ugly reflectors in our neighborhood, to me reveals a lack of respect for our neighborhood. And because we live there and people who are making these decisions don't live there, to me, it makes us wonder about who's making decisions about neighborhoods that may be considered lower income or less important than other neighborhoods in San Mateo that seem to be deemed more worthy of having, you know, better things put in, better roads, or maybe the quad gates, as we are all saying. I hate to think of what's going to happen to the people on Villa Terrace. I think it's very unfair to, to close their crossing. So I'm asking you to reconsider your decision and to bring a very unwanted change to our neighborhood and for you to consider installing the quad gates, which we are all saying is worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our final speaker in chamber will be Daria Savage.
Thank you, City Council. I just wanted to reiterate the importance of train horn noise reduction as a priority project for San Mateo. I also wanted to highlight that for some residents, including myself, who's lived here a few years, granted, I don't live in the affected area, so I can't really speak for that area, but the train horse, horn noise really causes anxiety and sleepless nights where I, you know, have to keep the windows closed and I can still hear it and wake up into the wee hours of the night. But again, like I said, I don't live in the affected area, so it's hard for me to speak of the viability of the solution. And from what I've heard today, it seems like the current proposal is going to affect a lot of the members of our community. The question that I had based on the slides is, I'm just curious why it takes five years to build two four quad gates, which is the same exact time as it would take to build eight gates. I'm just wondering if there is a possibility to revisit the timelines of building just the two gates at the two closings. And so I would be in support of doing that and would ask the City Council to consider the quad gates as a viable solution as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, our next speaker will be Bing Luo. Bing, please unmute your mic.
Hi, this is Bing. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
It's really glad to meet several neighbors, like 351, 350. I did not realize that parking was a, is a, is a big issue for the neighbors as I only keep one car. I'm asking the council to consider maybe closure or even more flexible solutions, well, such as temporarily close while, you know, the quad gate being built or close with the possibility for pedestrians to, to go because, well, that will, you know, leave a lot of flexibilities in, in the, in the solution. I think cost-wise, that would be better. And then based on my, like, travel experience, I think there are actually a lot of other solutions. I'm not sure how San Mateo can, can help, but I've seen multiple crossings with these, like, gate extenders, meaning like one side of the, the pole can actually cover the whole length of the, you know, the, the, the road. This will be a lot easier to, to implement. I just, you know, when the city size, like the three million, three million dollar cost to put the quad gate in one crossing, I was very surprised that, that number could just be higher, but I think with modern, like, engineering and, and technology, I feel like it's a, it should be, it should be possible. So to me, like, noise is also an important factor. I, I am deeply affected by, by the, by the, by the noise, but also I would like to, you know, to help the neighbors as well.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Morgan P. For. Morgan, please unmute your mic.
Hi, everyone. My name is Peter Morgan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Again, my name is Peter. I'm a resident of 324 Villa Terrace, Unit C, and I've been in the neighborhood for several years now. And hearing sort of the, the public comments today, I want to speak specifically about Villa Terrace, as I understand there's separate issues for the folks living over there on Bellevue. With regards to Villa Terrace, myself and my family are a strong proponent of closing the Caltrain gates at our crossing. And for us in our family, we see this as, as primarily a safety issue. We have a four-year-old and a two-year-old and we would feel, and hopefully more in the future, we would feel much more comfortable with our young boys not having the ability to cross as pedestrians the Villa Terrace walkway. And specifically with the gates and the, the bells and the noises that they make, for our kids, they actually attract them to want to go see the train and want to get close to the train. And so it's certainly anxiety-producing for us. And so we'd love to see the Villa Terrace sort of pedestrian and street drew closed. With sort of like the quiet zone really being a secondary benefit, it's primarily a safety thing for our family. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this item will be Michael Weinauer. Michael, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, Council members. This is Mike Weinauer from Central Neighborhood. I'm calling, the main thing I wanted to say was that I hope, you know, this has been a council priority since 2017. There's a reason for it and it comes up every year. This is a, one of the great, among few unifying items that we have in the city. It affects everyone, everywhere, whatever side of the track you're on, whether you're up in the hills, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, age, any, anything. The, the FRA's own documents highlight a study that talk about the impacts of noise on people's long-term health and it's very deleterious. And there's a topic that's near and dear to everyone's heart whenever it comes up at our Neighborhood Association, whenever we're talking about, when I talk about it with neighbors, they want this quiet zone done. There's always, you know, trade-offs for that, right? And I feel for the residents of the Bellevue neighborhood and I certainly think the quad gates would be better. $7 million, however, is a pretty tall ticket. What I wonder is, is would it be possible? I think expeditious, doing the most expeditious thing is what we need to do and get that in, but then can we revisit that and maybe put those gates in down the road when we can get the funding? That's one consideration I had there. And then finally, you know, I, I find it interesting that Rick Bonilla goes up and says, "We should put up quad gates, knowing full well they cost $7 million." Perhaps the city could get some of that money if he would, sitting on the board of the Housing Action Coalition, backed by billionaires, bankers, and real estate interests, drop his ridiculous lawsuit against the city over its housing element. That'd free up a bunch of cash for that type of an initiative. So if he really loves the city, let's make that happen. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Through the mayor, that was our last speaker as called previously, so that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And we're going to close public comment now and bring it back to Council for comments and questions.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to start.
Please.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to start by recognizing the input from my neighbors. I really appreciate you coming out. As many of you know, I live in North Central. I live, you know, within earshot of the, of the train tracks and, and I want to express, I think, you know, and reiterate that many of us share the goal of, of reducing noise pollution and increasing safety. That is, in fact, a unifying issue. I completely agree. And I think along the way, many of us have, have affirmed our agreement that this is a priority without knowing what the remediations and fixes would be and what their impact to the community would be. The, the impact to circulation, the impact to traffic. And, and a lot of times, too often, in my neighborhood of North Central, we bear the disproportionate burden of, of parking loss for overarching citywide goals. And it seems to me like a, an issue of equity and, you know, in, in a neighborhood that is deemed by SB 1000, a equity community priority area, the densest neighborhood, the neighborhood with some of the worst parking conditions, the lowest-ranked, lowest-ranked safe routes to school area in the county, and on and on and on. And so I, I wish to, you know, contextualize some, you know, some of the challenges when our neighbors come here representing themselves and feeling deep frustration about processes that they've been left out of, processes where maybe we're asking community surveys that aren't delineating the input from the impacted community members, right? And, and I, I wish to further reiterate that, you know, in, specifically in the neighborhood of North Central, where there was a, a bike lane that was installed that resulted in the loss of over 200 parking, parking spaces, we also, as a city, promised parking programs that have yet to be delivered. And that is certainly a serious concern in terms of us looking at mitigations for, for recouping parking spaces when in fact, we don't have confidence, or I personally am struggling to, to stay with confidence, that parking, parking programs can and will be implemented in a timely fashion. So, so I want to lay that out. And in terms of some questions I'd like to ask, you know, when the council adopted this priority seven years ago, was it seven years ago, 2017, is that right? Anyways, so many years ago, we, you know, the electrification process was early- Anyways, so many years ago, we, you know, the electrification process was earlier. And I'm, I'm just curious, if we could get, is there an updated analysis in terms of the electrification process and the new Caltrain system? And how, you know, what, what can we expect to come in terms of the way of, of noise reduction just through that process?
I can begin to answer some of those questions. In terms of Caltrain electrification, we know that the electrification process will involve increase of trains. The trains will be quieter, but they will still have the train horns as required by the FRA. The trains will be, the train horns will be located at the front of the train and on the bottom of the train, so they'll be pretty similar to the existing train horns now. But the trains themselves, as they operate, will be quieter than current trains now.
Okay. So overall, we can expect a reduction in train noise, although the frequency of the trains will be increasing. Is that accurate?
Yes. The frequency of the trains will be increasing, and the horns themselves will still be bound by the same FRA requirements, but the trains, as they operate, will be quieter.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that. I wanted to ask about the, you know, the risk index that was set by the FRA and the goal of getting to the 90% threshold. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that staff has mentioned in previous meetings around this is that, is that the FRA has full authority to potentially change that threshold and reevaluate that threshold. And so potentially, there's a possibility where we invest significant resources in permanent fixes or, or long-term fixes that may lose, lose ground in terms of a, a reassessment or any, any change to the, the risk index criteria. Is that a possibility that we should be managing for and considering?
Yes. This is a really good question, and we've had extensive conversations with the FRA on this. So what they've told us is that if we were to achieve a quiet zone, as part of their process, they require cities to reassess or reaffirm or reevaluate their risk index every three years. Also, the risk index is impacted by increase of trains or accidents. We've done some modeling internally and found that if we have the trains double in amount with our current proposed closure and medians, we would still be able to keep our train quiet zone. And also, one thing that the FRA has told us is that maintenance of certain safety measures, such as the closure, such as medians, such as reflectors, are also important for maintaining the quiet zone, and that's something we are committed to and would work with our maintenance staff to ensure that that stays maintained so that we could keep our quiet zone.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, you're saying that, just for the public's knowledge, we're acknowledging that the FRA will be reevaluating their criteria every three years, something that the city itself has no jurisdiction or control over, right? We, the things that we do have control over is how we maintain our, our improvements. And, and then if there is a scenario where there is an accident, the FRA could, would have the power to revoke our quiet zone entirely. Is that, is that as true as well?
Yes. So there is a reaffirmation process every three years, and the FRA would work with the cities. We've been told that as long as we maintain our safety features and, you know, work with the FRA, as long as accidents are minimized, we should be able to maintain our quiet zone.
Okay. But we can't say with 100% confidence that within three years, within six years, within nine years, that the FRA evaluation criteria won't significantly change or that that threshold 90% will still maintain. And we don't necessarily have control over any potential accidents that could result in the revocation of, of the safe, of the quiet zone.
It's correct to say that the city does not have control over all the factors that go into the risk index.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my other question was about, you know, the complete streets process and how this might marry with some of our complete streets goals. And one of the things that, for many years now, this is my fifth year on council, I've, I've been supporting the, the specific neighborhood-wide complete streets analysis of North Central, our equity community priority area. And one of the, one of the points of analysis was how to improve circulation through the study of one-way streets. And if there is a potential of one, one day, you know, before I'm a grandmother, you know, actually getting a, you know, that complete streets analysis done and, and potentially implementing new ideas that had never been studied or considered before in the past, like one-way streets, you know, is it possible that, that then we would have invested in quad gates at seven million dollars or closed streets entirely, that maybe if we had one-way streets would not have warranted those designs?
Can you speak to the complete streets process?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's always possible, when, if we're looking at new designs and things that haven't been tried before, that there's always a possibility that we could implement something that we'd look back and say, "That wasn't the right thing to implement." So I think, yeah, we'd have to say yes, that's a possibility.
So my last line of question is around, the, the chart that was, was shown, shown to us about the, the risk index for Fourth and Fifth Avenue under existing conditions was around 120%. Did I remember that correctly?
138.
138. And so I guess I'm wondering, you know, is there, is there a possibility that, that we actually look at improving Fourth and Fifth, concentrating and directing some of our attention on, on fixes and improvements to Fourth and Fifth Avenue, which have, which have, would have a much lower impact on concentrated residential areas? Like, have we thought about extending medians 100 feet in that area? Or, you know, other improvements that would lower that threshold?
So for Fourth and Fifth already, we've received Section 130 funding to put quad gates there, and that's the gold standard for safety features. And so without the improvements at Fourth and Fifth, our risk index would be higher because we've already worked with Caltrain and investments have already been made. The city has assumed for our baseline that those projects will be complete. And in 2025, you know, Caltrain will complete implementation for quad gates there.
So I guess just help me understand, why, if it's at the gold standard, why isn't it below the 90% threshold?
Without improvements at Fourth and Fifth, the risk index with our current conditions would be even higher. We're only able to inch toward implementation of a quiet zone because of the work that is in progress at Fourth and Fifth and also being proposed at Villa Terrace and East Bellevue.
Okay. Well, I thought it was worth asking. So, you know, just to round this out, and I know we're running against time, and I'm sure council, my council colleagues also have some things to say. I, you know, I, I have concerns about, about the current designs. And, and personally, I wish that we would go back to the directly impacted community members to get there, to get to a place of consensus. If there is a, you know, if there is a solution or a support for a solution that would involve, you know, full street closure for the purposes of safety, you know, is that a better solution that needs, deserves more study and time? You know, I, I, in a budget crisis, I think it's hard to, it's hard to justify further delays of this project at, you know, an additional seven million dollars if there is support from the neighborhood to actually, to move forward with a street closure that would accomplish a lower threshold of the safety index. So I'm, you know, my, my strong feeling is that, you know, as my community, my neighbors are calling for the city to please hear, hear their concerns and this council to consider, you know, a, a, a look at a design that will be supported by the neighborhood, that will, you know, that will not, will not result in more parking loss for our city, for our neighbor, neighborhood and those streets, and will actually support the goals of safety and train noise reduction. So I ask council to, to heed our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hedges.
First, I want to thank Councilwoman Lee for asking many of the question and making them part of the record that I would have asked. But I would like to go, and by the way, this was a great presentation. You did a very good job, because I also was with Mayor Nash in, in Washington DC with the neighborhood folks. So could you please bring up the side where, where we have the costs of these various?
And I'm going to do a quick time check. I know we're at 7 o'clock, mayor, maybe another 15 minutes?
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
What I'm going to have to say won't take that long.
Well, better not.
I just need everybody to see this, because I want to make a point. Thank you. So it looks to me like that a, for, that it's not seven million dollars to put a quad gate at, at Bellevue, but 3.5 million, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's about a half a million dollars to extend the, the, the street divider, right?
Right.
So then the cost actually goes down to three million dollars if you don't have to extend the divider. Is that correct?
So the three and a half million dollars would be the quad gates alone?
Yeah, so, so, but, but the other, but, but the overall cost, we would reduce a half a million dollars out of that if we did the quad gates and didn't do the extended, extended divider. It's pretty simple math. If you don't do it, you don't have to pay for it.
Right.
Okay, thanks. So I try to always meet with people before, especially something like this, but just let me say, I lived a block and a half from the old downtown train station for nine years. I know train noise. I'm a very fortunate person that I wear out alarm clocks trying to wake me up in the morning, so the train never really bothered me that much. But I know it does bother a lot of people a great deal, and I understand that. So I went out to Villa Terrace and met with a representative of the community, and he raised the parking, we even had other issues. That wasn't a big concern of mine until he told me a story. So earlier, a few years earlier, a young man went around the train gates and was hit by the train. The train was smashed. He was bleeding profusely. And Mr. Martin got towels from his home, stopped the bleeding. He was life-fighted to Stanford and saved. His car was flattened. So he was on his way to San Mateo High School. When we close Villa Terrace, the amount of students coming down Bellevue will increase at least by two times. So in looking at this and knowing what I was like at a teenager, knowing that my seven-year-old great-grandson is very impulsive, and knowing the kids that I grew up with, it was a real high to try to beat a train. So I'm telling you right now that unless we make that safer, with quad gates would be my preference. Closing it would be okay, but what you're going to do is throw even more traffic onto the materials, so it would not be my, my first choice. But I can't do this and vote for this, even though I want it very badly, knowing that it's a great likelihood that someone's child going to school will take a very bad chance and kill themselves. It's already happened nearly one time at that intersection. So I'm telling you, we've got to find the three million dollars for quad gates or close the, close the street. We cannot go forward with this and endanger these kids. I just can't do it. So that's my position.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina, for your presentation. Could, could I just get you or staff to respond to comments that we've heard disputing the number of parking spaces that are going to be removed on Bellevue? And maybe could you clarify if, if when we're talking about five, for example, we're talking about five additional ones or, or five?
So we are talking about five additional ones. Currently, there are shorter medians that are not FRA compliant that have already resulted in parking spots lost here. So with the addition, or with the removal of the existing medians and addition of 100-foot-long medians, we see five additional parking spots removed. So three on the west side and two on the east side.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lorraine, I think there's additional comment.
Oh, thank, from staff? Okay.
Sorry. I, I wanted to add to that the design parameter is a standard length of 22 feet. So as Tina mentioned, the number may change based off of actual lengths of cars that will be there. So the five stalls is based off of the 22-foot standard length.
Thank you. So we, we've, we've heard from a number of folks tonight and in email and elsewhere. I heard from folks who live on or near Villa Terrace and Bellevue that there will be real impacts on their streets as a result of this project, that there will be less parking on East Bellevue, some people, as we are seeing here, some people parking on the street will need to park elsewhere. The remaining spots are in high demand, and some have safety concerns about this street once the medians are extended, and that quad gates would be preferred. I agree that safety is a top priority, and we need to be keeping safety top of mind when looking at projects like this. I, I agree with what some have mentioned, that while the quiet zone provides benefits, and while those are, are also important, the safety benefits and, and thinking about safety is, is, is best and, and important. I appreciate the work that's been done by staff to dig deeper into this project and how it would, in fact, impact those who live around it. I appreciate what we're seeing here. I appreciate a parking supply study and mitigation options. I appreciate knocking on people's doors and surveying the neighbors and still finding more residents that are for this project than against it. Though I will concede, I, I do appreciate Councilmember Lee's comments as well. I, I do think that, and I also appreciate that, that there's an intent to look into traffic calming on Bellevue after this project. I, I am, I am hopeful that that approach will help allay some of the concerns that people have about what I feel like is, is thinking about the worst-case scenarios as, with cars in this area when the, you know, when the gates are down, et cetera, people feeling time pressure and so on. I, you know, I, I think the case has been made that this will increase safety in a cost-effective manner. I understand that we would prefer to have quad gates at each A- grade crossing that we would like to keep open, but as we saw, it's, it's considerably more expensive and will take considerably more time. I, I appreciated the grid that talked about the different percentage thresholds, and I, I find them very telling. I, I think, you know, one thing that someone hasn't brought up yet is, if we were to put quad gates at Villa Terrace and Bellevue, the threshold appears to be at 89%.
Councilmember Lorraine, could you try and wrap that up? We're almost out of time.
Yes. I, I think this...
Okay. Shh. Everyone, we're in the middle of a discussion. We need you to be quiet. Shh. Please, we can't get to anything else.
Thank you. I, I'll, I'll sum up by saying I, I feel that this...
Please be quiet.
I feel that this table sums up that we, we have an opportunity to potentially increase safety in a cost-effective way. There will be impacts, and I think that's unfortunate. But I, I would not support closing Bellevue Avenue. I think a lot of people have mentioned that, and the admin report suggests that there would be some, some larger traffic impacts that would come as a result of that. So I think, I, I'm in favor of staff's proposal at this time.
Okay, Councilman, or Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Sorry, I lost my train of thought momentarily. Pardon the pun.
Everyone, can you please be quiet coming in? It's only respectful to all the other people who are here.
So when we are, a couple of questions. How, how long would it take to, or I guess, let me rephrase it. Why would it take less time to change the gates from, you know, from quads to just, you know, the two gates? Is that because we wouldn't be changing the gates at all? We'd just be keeping with what we had?
So your question is relating to timeline for quad gates versus keeping the existing two quad gates.
Right.
Quad gates, we'd have to work with Caltrain to implement, and also they have specialized vendors that they use for their systems and signals. We know exactly how long and how much it takes to install quad gates because we're doing it right now for Fourth and Fifth. And since we initiated it in 2020, we know that it takes roughly this long to be able to implement, and we're hoping that Fourth and Fifth will be completed in first quarter of January, or first quarter of 2025.
And I, Councilwoman Lee was asking about this, and I don't think I quite understood. So on Fourth and Fifth, we've added quad gates, but we haven't extended the medians, and that's why the rating is not going down as much.
I'll make a correction. So the current medians at Fourth and Fifth are not FRA standard. They would not be required after the quad gates are put in. And currently, Caltrain is in construction to place the quad gates in, but they're not in yet. They are expected to be completely in by first quarter of next year.
Okay. So when the quad gates are in, the safety rating will go to the best it's going to be, be able to go to?
Exactly.
There's nothing that we can do addition to to grease the, okay.
Right.
As far as Villa Terrace, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with closing Villa Terrace. When it comes to Bellevue, I, like some of my peers here, really feel as though quad gates is the best solution that we should be looking at. Obviously, there's a lot more cost to that. Would we be closing the street for a period of time to make that change?
For Bellevue?
Yes.
I don't believe closure of Bellevue would be necessary if we were to install quad gates.
So what about an alternative of trying to close Bellevue on a temporary basis, whether it be six months or a year, so we could see what the impact would be of having both of them closed and see if it had a substantial impact on the area?
That would be an option, although the traffic study has shown that closure of both Villa Terrace and Bellevue would have some traffic circulation issues. And you're right, we could evaluate them after it's done as well.
Would be better to do with real time, though, right? Being able to see what the impacts really were?
Yeah.
And, okay. So that's my stance. My stance is I, I'd like us to consider a temporary closure, and if we're going to do gates, I would really appreciate seeing quad gates. I know we need to find another $3 million, and that's going to be a challenge, but we're up to the challenge. Thank you.
Excuse me. No, no applauding. Thank you very much. So I guess in trying to see where we are, everyone wants more safety. Everyone wants neighborhood convenience. I'm hearing a lot of support from the, the neighbors who came tonight for closure at Bellevue Avenue as well as, as Villa Terrace. I'm hearing some support among council members for that. I'm hearing one council member saying the impact of traffic for doing that would be too great. Councilmember Lee was, I, I heard concerns, but I didn't hear a recommendation as to which one of these you were supportive of.
My recommendation was that we go back to the community with some of these, these options and try to reach better consensus. I think that the idea of, of evaluating a temporary closure and what that, what the resulting impact would be on circulation is worthwhile. I'm open to, to consideration of closure. I'm open to consideration of the four quad gate. However, I don't, from a financial perspective, knowing that the FRA threshold is variable and out of our control, it, it doesn't give me high confidence that this solution will maintain the quiet zone. And so if the goal is to obtain a quiet zone and we know that it will only reach 89%, right? Then that, that should be of serious consideration in terms of the long-term impacts of maintaining a quiet zone and the significant cost of $3 million.
So would you be supportive of option G, but may, doing it for a one-year perspective as Deputy Mayor Newsom suggested?
I, I'm open to that as a possibility. I think that the best, the best option would be to continue seeking consensus with the community members and evaluating.
Okay. I guess I would, I would suggest that, given the fact that we also have the city of San Mateo that's been wanting this for many, many years, the quiet zones, that I'm actually hearing from a majority of council to that adding, doing the closure of Villa Terrace and a temporary closure at East Bellevue would be something that would be, council would be open to considering. What would be the impact of doing a temporary versus a closure altogether?
The temporary closure would allow us to qualify for a quiet zone. If we ever remove the temporary conditions, then the quiet zone would go away.
Right. But if we decided, if we set a limit saying we want to do it for one year with the goal of saying we will either make it permanent or do something else that will maintain the quiet zone?
Yes. That is a possibility to do a quiet zone for a brief period of time while the temporary closure is in.
So is there something you want to say, City Manager?
Yeah. Just, just based off of what we would have to do, even trying to get to the temporary, I think we have to talk to our public safety officials first and foremost and have that discussion. So I think we have enough direction, Mayor, that I'm hearing could be potential temporary closure, quad gates. Have a more discussion with the neighborhood, specifically the Bellevue neighborhood with, with this crossing itself. And staff, we'd have to go back and have additional discussions from a public safety perspective as well with our police and fire department. And then maybe we come back again with another study session with the council, just kind of what we find out.
Yeah. Yes. You're not on.
We're going to have at least eight trains during the period of time that school starts. And I just caution you that if we have a really bad accident there, we'll lose the quiet zone anyway, likely. So we really need to protect that intersection because I can just see, I know what kids are like. I'm not going to go through it anymore, and you do too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, so you're suggesting doing the temporary while you're investigating other...
I'm, I'm not saying that. Let's go ahead and, within the next couple of months, let's go ahead and work with the neighborhood. We've heard kind of, I've heard some consensus about potentially quad gates, which would cost us more to look at, temporary closure, which we'd have to look at as well. But I also have to work with our public safety staff, our police department, our fire department, to see exactly what that means from access standpoint and response times for that part of the city as well. And then we can bring it back here for additional deliberation with the council about next steps.
Great. I think that is something that we all could get behind.
Same note in heads of all.
Great. Thank you. You got it. And thank you to everybody who came and spoke. We really appreciate it. This is important for all of us. So with that, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Apologies to everybody who came in, but as you can see, we went over on...